Welcome, everyone. Good evening. This is Paige Nuez. I'm dialing in from California to everyone in the Midwest. Our skies are clearing here and it's nice to be with you tonight. I am very happy to have with us Gillette Children's Hospital, University of Minnesota, the Midwest Rett Syndrome Foundation, and our ret syndrome.org state rep Matt Doms to bring us all back together. We're at an interesting time where we're at the crossroads of the thing we have in common, which is Rett Syndrome, as well as a global pandemic, economic crisis, we're in an election year, we have a lot of things that have caused us to postpone meetings, not live our lives with business as usual, and a lot of families have been asking, well, what's going on with associations? What's going on with our foundation? What's going on with our clinic? What's going on with research? And so I'm really grateful that everyone is taking some time this evening out of their lives to give us an update and give you a chance to answer some questions that you have. We do have all of your questions that you pre-submitted and we'll get to those at the end of the presentation tonight. But you also have in your GoToWebinar dashboard, the opportunity to type in questions. So anything you didn't get to us ahead of time, go ahead and type it in now. Or if a question comes up during the town hall, go ahead and type it in and we'll get to it. Some logistics for GoToWebinar, if you haven't used this application before, you are automatically muted, so you don't have to worry about any of your background noise and your webcams are off as well. So you can just sit back and relax. If you're in your pajamas, that's fine, and I hope your family is with you. And especially family members who maybe have not had the opportunity to come to any of the Midwest Ed Days in the past. This will be a nice chance for you to get to see some names and faces that you've been hearing. We are recording this presentation, so for anyone who wants to take notes, don't worry about it. You'll get a link in an email tomorrow or sometime over the weekend with a link to the recording. So don't worry about taking notes and you can also take that link and forward it on to any friends, providers, clinicians, therapists in your network that you think could benefit from this information. Okay, so that's it for the logistics of how to GoToWebinar works. Our agenda tonight, we welcome you and then we're going to hear from your Rett clinic team. We're going to hear from your research team at University of Minnesota. I'll come back on and share some updates with you from ret syndrome.org, from some new resources and things that we have to offer, and Matt Doms is going to share some information as well. And then we'll be joined by Lisa Evert from the Midwest Rett Syndrome Foundation for some wonderful updates from your local foundation. And then we'll close out the evening with Q and A. Okay, so right now I'd like to bring on Matt Doms. Hi, Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. So I am Matt Doms. My wife, Ashley, and I are the family empowerment representatives for the state of Minnesota on behalf of ret syndrome.org. We are parents to a 10-year-old girl diagnosed with Rett Syndrome. Bennett is a funny, sweet, and happy girl with a healthy dose of sassy. Bennett was diagnosed with Rett Syndrome on January 31st, 2012. That we got that diagnosis after about 10 months of testing. Gillette and the Rett Clinic, Dr. Bysing, Dr. Fima, Dr. Ward, and many others have given us hope. Hope that we can give our child the best life she deserves and hope that one day there may be a cure for Rett Syndrome. The Rett Syndrome Foundation and ret syndrome.org have given us strength. We have found we are not alone. We have met so many wonderful people and they have helped us so much. The combination of hope and strength has shown us how resilient we are. We knew we needed to help others navigate this journey like others did before us. So Ashley and I chose to take on the family empowerment representative roles. For those newly diagnosed parents, we understand this might be a scary and stressful time for you. We are glad that you have found some have found some of the best care possible for your child here at Gillette. We also understand that you probably have a million questions swirling around your head and we'd like you to know we are here to help you however we can. As you will find, the journey has its ups and downs, but we love our kids the best we can and that is enough. You may have heard about the promising research and clinical trials through ret syndrome.org and we both hold on to hope that the future has some good things in store for our children. So that's kind of our story in a nutshell. And then towards the end, I'll share how you can get in contact with us. But now I'll turn it over to Dr. Bysing and Dr. Fima to talk about the Rett Clinic at Gillette. Thanks.
Well, thank you, everybody. Dr. Fima and I did not rehearse this. So that we may stumble over each other. We do that sometimes, but at least we're on the same page, going in the same direction. The first slide we have is our staff here at Gillette. Dr. Fima and I are the co-directors and we've been around for quite a while doing this. Dr. Ward has been with us along the way, but we have a couple of new people that are here. We have, we're working hard in PM and R to get adult physical medicine rehab doctors to be involved with Rett Syndrome. Dr. Geddings has been involved and now recently Dr. Abella is involved and is very excited to be there. We also have Amy Ottama, which we don't pronounce her name the way it's spelled because she's from New Orleans. And then, of course, we have Dr. Guillaume. And one of the people that is not in this picture that has been for a long time is Latasia Erickson, who has been our nurse from the beginning. And she is, there's been a lot of change at Gillette as far as where nurses are working and she has done most of her work with physical medicine rehabilitation. And so she has left the Rett Clinic, but we now have Nikki Zelman, who is a wonderful replacement and many of you have met her. She's going to be very helpful and will step into the big shoes that Latasia left for us. Anything else, Tim, that I missed?
No, I think it's pretty good. I think some of the clinics for Rett in various locations have a lot bigger teams than we do. I think we have an even bigger team than stated here. If we need genetics and orthopedics and nephrology and cardiology, we have a lot, but we try to keep our clinic sort of streamlined. And so, yeah, we have a huge team, but we sort of try to, much as we can streamline the visits to what the core of the need is. And if we need to involve more, we have everybody at our disposal as well.
I guess next slide, please. Traditionally, we've had one day a month where we've had Rett Clinic. And now, starting tomorrow, actually, we're going to go to two days a month. We're just, we have a demand for a lot of patients and we're trying to fit everybody in and so we're excited to be able to do this. Also, we are able to do some telemedicine visits. I recently got medical licenses in the surrounding states to Minnesota so that we'll be able to help with some of those distance visits when people are a little worried about COVID. We certainly, it's no substitute for seeing patients in person, but it can be helpful for some questions. So that's available now too. One of the things we do at Gillette is a lot of surgery where, if I say so myself, we're a great place for posterior spinal fusion surgeries. We do a lot of them on all kinds of kids with complex neurological issues. So Rett Syndrome fits right into that and we're open for business and doing a lot of that surgery now. So that's available. And I'll be quiet and let Tim talk a little bit.
No, I'm good. I think you're covering it well, Art. Thank you.
I guess we need the next slide, please. They asked us for wisdom about COVID and of course I have no wisdom. Where I think when I talk to parents about risk of COVID, I talked to a lot of parents of kids with Rett Syndrome and other kids with neurologic impairment. And in my mind, I'm thinking about how well are they doing with their lungs and kidneys and fighting infections with their immune system? And we've been very lucky so far. We've had a couple of patients with Rett Syndrome who have contracted COVID and they've done very well. Did not need the intensive care unit and so that's very encouraging. Of course, the other thing we need to think about is who are these kids living with? Are there grandparents or other folks that are at risk? So when we think about going back to school, those are all considerations we have. And certainly in the question and answer, we can talk more about that. My advice is just speculation based on what I know about the research. I don't think there's any real definite answers, especially for Rett Syndrome.
Yeah, I can piggyback on that just for a second too. I think for those that know us, they know us. For those that don't know our clinic, we really only see medically complex, mostly pediatrics, some adults. And it felt like when COVID came that we were sitting on top of K-dynamite. We were very, very worried about our patients and we simply haven't seen the explosion. I'm sure there's parents that are engaged in various online forums and we still take it very seriously. We're definitely recommending precautions, but thankfully in the Rett population that we care for, we haven't seen any severe injuries yet. Maybe we haven't seen it because the families are so on top of their game, but I also think that, you know, just it seems like overall for all the vulnerable kids we see, we've seen quite a few kids with COVID and they've done relatively well overall. Vulnerable, but not as vulnerable as some of the elderly and some of the other high-risk populations, a lot of immune diseases.
Next slide, please. Tim, why don't you take this since you're the lead investigator in these?
Yeah, I think with the Rett Syndrome, there's been an explosion in research opportunities and that there's even more than these two. But the two that we're most involved in at the moment and there's even a larger amount of research studies we're doing. I'll let Frank and his team speak to that because we are kind of a weird entity. We collaborate deeply with the University of Minnesota and industry and we have a broad collaboration locally. I think for those who are interested in research, we are participating in the Acadia trial, the 03 and 04. And we also are involved in the GW Pharma for some of the cannabidiol products as well. I mean, there's other opportunities out there like gonoxalone and there's a few other compounds being studied as well and pluramine. But we're focused on these because we're most hopeful for these and right now we are recruiting dedicated genetic counselors who are helping us with these studies. And already I was setting up another screening visit for somebody in October. Dr. Bysing and I both screened the patients, both did the follow-up for the patients. And I'm not going to dig too much into this because I think later in this talk, there will be some discussion about the MyRett Trial Finder. And I'm going to let that kind of happen when it happens because I think it's good for people to navigate what options are out there. But anybody interested for the Acadia and for the Trifinitide, patients five to 21, there's a screening process that everybody gets in. There are certain guidelines that get really detailed and in our pages long in regard to who fits and who doesn't. And for the GW Pharma, we're looking for patients aged two to 18. The contact information for those studies is right there. If anybody has any other, if they lose that, I'm happy to forward it to them or I can get you contact information for our, thanks for our research department as well.
Next slide, please. So the natural history study, of course, has been going on longer than Gillette has been involved with Rett Syndrome. We are one of the regional sites for natural history study and we invite anybody who's not involved to be involved. I think one of the inside baseball sorts of things we need to know about the natural history study, giving a lot of credit to Dr. Percy and Dr. Newell and others who traveled around the country for several years, once every, one weekend every month to get this started is this is really the reason that we have drug trials right now. They have a lot of patients with other rare diseases and every other rare disease is trying to follow the game plan of Rett Syndrome in how to get drug trials for their rare disease. The first step is to have a robust natural history study so that we can understand natural progression of disease. And also that gives us a cohort of patients to, that drug companies then want to work on for research rare diseases. So we need to thank Dr. Percy and crew every time we can about the natural history study because that is the reason we're able to do all of the research we can today. So we're open for business and happy to have anybody participate in our site or one of the other sites. Bio-banking is a spin-off of that where we're going to save lots of biological tissues for research. And I don't know where that's going to take us, but it's going to make a big difference in the future. So we would like people to volunteer for that also. Tim, if you have something to say?
No, I think it's great. I think the natural history study, the next iteration is going to come out and there's a lot of discussion about what that will look like because it will continue in some form. And then the bio-banking, it's already yielded benefits for at least one of our patients who had Rett Syndrome, but no mutation. And because we were allowed to test their samples, we found the mutation they had. Because we think about MECP2, but CDQL5, FOXG1, I mean, it's more than just MECT mutations that lead to Rett.
Next slide, please. Or is that the last one? Oh, we're on to the University of Minnesota, so I'm going to mute.
Frank, we got done in time.
Wow. I don't know what to say. I mean, Paige said to keep this informal. I was pouring a drink and then all of a sudden you guys are done. I don't know about that. Welcome, everybody. I'm Frank Simons at the University of Minnesota. I'm taking this in part, again, following Paige's lead, that this is like our spring Rett Ed Day. So for those of you who are familiar with Rett Ed Day, you will know based on that last comment from Tim, that typically the U of M does follow those two. And usually they leave us about three minutes and then it's lunch. And I've got 20 or 30 slides and then I don't show any of them and I tell a joke and then I get off the stage. So I could do that or we could go through our slides. And a couple of other things for housekeeping, if you're familiar with us or me, this is me. This is my COVID playoff hockey beard and I'm still rocking the ponytail. So I just added the beard. Okay, enough. I'm going to make a couple of opening remarks in acknowledging the team and then walk through three recent updates on study outcomes and then hand it off to Dr. Brienne Byers, the brains behind this entire operation, and she's going to tell you about an ongoing and active study that for which she's recruiting and give you the details on that. So next slide, please, Paige. I think what we have coming right up is, 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 that's us, that's our names, is who are we? And often this is a slide because I'm used to being compressed. I never get to the acknowledgement slide. So I thought I'll start with us, the A-Team. And Tim alluded to this, that I think he said it's a weird arrangement. It's a great arrangement. There's a three-legged stool here in Minnesota in the Midwest. The clinic at Gillette Children's for Child and Adult Services, the research group at the University of Minnesota, and the parents and advocates in the Midwest Rett Syndrome Foundation, of which used to be the Midwest Research Association. And I still got my shirt from the original golf tournament I attended. So it's a fantastic relationship capitalizing on unique strengths among each of those groups. So this is just a list of people who are active or been part of our group over the years that include former students, post-docs, trainees, fellow faculty, who've had an opportunity to get to know Rett in a way that we wouldn't, they would not have had if we didn't have this three-legged stool going. So that's the U of M team. And then on the Gillette side, I think the slides just sort of build on one another. That's our group. Some of these names were already featured by Tim and Art, but there are others on the research side. Chantel Barney and Lisa and Abby that make it go. So my term, as some of people have heard, is, you know, the U of M, we're not Gillette Gillette. To really advance clinical research with the university, we need to be very integrated. And so the Gillette Gillette folks within Research Administration are champions also of a bunch of the research protocols we have together to make this go. And then last but not least, the Midwest Rett Syndrome Foundation, Lisa, and now I put Chuck in there in parentheses, and all the families we're deeply appreciative of, and then our funding. And we've been successful in securing sponsored support from the National Institutes of Health, a number of foundations, et cetera. So it's been, it's been a great journey. We're not going anywhere. COVID or no COVID, we're committed to moving the agenda along, the space we occupy. As some of you have seen slides I've had before between the natural history study and the bench of around functional behavior, health, communication, what to do right now. So I think what I'll do, I think I have three more slides just to walk through some recent study findings and give you a flavor of what's new. Next slide, please. Yes, and one more. We had, some of you will recall from a little while ago, a big survey related to one of our interests. And I know, I feel behind on it because Dr. Bysing and I have been talking about this for years in relation to the nature of the experience, the quality of the supports or lack thereof, it variable, related to the school experience and that part related to Rett and trying to shine a light and find out how things are going. And so our first crack at this was a survey asking about parent perceptions and satisfaction with a range of supports, special ed rehabilitation supports and services in the school. Some key takeaways for us, based on what was reported by you all, is that most often, most parents said they were at least somewhat satisfied with the special education services. There was frustration and so part of this is me telling you the obvious, but our point is to disseminate and get the information out in terms of knowledge transfer to then take another step. So access to communication devices and in particular staff training around communication were areas of frustration or concern for many, many of you in terms of the parent responses. And parents of older children are less likely to be satisfied with the amount and quality of related services, PTOT speech. So that's a start, if you will, could even be considered a baseline for thinking about maybe a program of work where we could get further into schools or a particular district and work to improve their knowledge and understanding of the unique needs and supports for girls and boys with Rett Syndrome, whom, you know, recall, many are not going to be familiar, even in their training with a rare neurodevelopmental neurological disorder in general and then specific to Rett. So for me, the takeaway from this in total is there's work to be done in terms of raising the knowledge bar in the education, special education, rehabilitation in schools, community. And so for us, we're always looking for opportunities amongst our new graduate students or colleagues of being able to take that next step. So that's, that's one study we wanted to update folks on that people have participated and contributed to. And here's one of the outcomes of that. Next slide, please. They don't trust me with the buttons. So this is maybe a bit more basic. This is us, you know, we're the spit, what was the spit on a stick and work like that from the state fair. And that was to get comparison samples, but you know, we like to collect saliva. We're opportunists, so we collect what we can, when we can. This is an update on, for those of you who have been part of at least the first wave when we were collecting saliva. And we've been looking at biomarkers, particularly molecules that are relevant to the body's neuroimmune function. And the name, the category name for a lot of these little molecules are cytokines. They're important in the, as markers for the way cells talk to one another around regulating inflammation and they reflect immune function. So one, this is, remember, for a lot of what we're doing, we're at the front end of, you know, moving an approach that might be understood from the bench of, well, how does that look like in terms of human clinical work? So first, these things are detectable in saliva as opposed to blood. I know Tim and Art mentioned blood and the bio-banking incredibly important. We're always looking for ways to think about non-invasive approaches to sample biology and saliva is one of them. So we go to saliva as well. So these molecules that we know exist in all of us, this is not Rett-specific, but the question is, what do they look like in Rett and can you find them in saliva? So they're detectable in saliva. And importantly, when we think about a longer program of work related to, from an FDA trials perspective of endpoints that could substitute in for clinical endpoints, we were looking at biomarkers in relation to the clinical severity of Rett symptoms associated with the syndrome. And they seem that the concentration values of these molecules we're looking at seem to correlate in some instances quite well or strongly with clinical severity of total symptom presentation. So the takeaway for us, and Tim and Art know this, is we do try to argue through them into the larger consortium of consider the possibility of adding saliva in an exploratory way of looking at immune function and then monitoring those molecules, you know, maybe during a clinical trial. And that may get us some new information. Or it could be that, you know, you can learn the same thing from saliva, you could learn from blood. So those are the kinds of questions we try to circle around in terms of what's the point? And one more, one more slide and one more study from me for an update. So again, another kind of more basic or translational study where we've been looking, and many of you participated, so thank you with your, I think primarily daughters, that we've been, as you know, for me in particular, my concern around issues around pain and sensory function and how to find out more about the pain system as it relates to sensory processing and quality of life in terms of trying to connect two ends of a continuum, maybe. So where to start? Will we chip away at it? You know, we've had a behavioral program of research using non-verbal pain rating scales, also quantitative sensory testing that we modify. So now we're trying to link that with biology and in this is an instance led by Alyssa Merbler, many of whom you know, one of our senior doc students in our group, that we were looking at heart rate variability as a measure of autonomic regulation in part. And in relation to when we're doing that sensory testing, so many of you are familiar with that, that when we're poking and all of that and what are you videotaping and scoring behavior? And then we're trying to relate that behavioral reactivity that's related to the kind of stimulus and that your daughter's experiencing in relation to sensory perception. And how does that look like in terms of a biological marker for arousal? And that's what the study was showing, that it seems like the variability in heart rate at rest might be an important indicator of capacity of, capacity of the biological integrity of the autonomic system to respond to stress because it predicted for us how much reactivity we saw in some of that tactile testing. So where are we going with this? And we know it's a long road, but we think, why would we do this? We think it's important. We think it's one way, one pathway to thinking a little bit more, in a little more detail about these kinds of assessments that we're trying to modify, make clinic friendly, ultimately understand pain sensitivity and the nature of the pain response in Rett Syndrome. So that's a quick snapshot of three of our most recent findings, kind of representing the breadth of what's going on over at the U in very close concert with what's going on at Gillette. And I'm going to turn it over to Brienne to talk about one of the big ongoing studies and the recruitment, participation opportunities there. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Frank. So Frank did a nice job of setting up.
All right. Thanks, Frank. So Frank did a nice job of setting up some of what I'm going to talk about right now, which is an ongoing study um, where we are looking to recruit families, um, that continues our work looking at measures that could potentially be used to evaluate change during clinical trials in RET syndrome. So this study is currently funded by the National Institutes of Health, and the goal is to validate three different measures of symptoms, um, of RET syndrome. So those of you who've heard me talk before know that we coming up with good outcome measures is, is really important to our group because RET is not one thing, and there's not going to be one measure that we can use to, to see whether we've moved the dial in terms of, um, improving sort of RET symptoms. So we need an array of different outcome measures that we can use to look at what symptoms are changing in response to new, new therapies that are coming online. For this particular study, we, um, have three non-invasive measures that we're using to look at sleep patterns, hand and foot temperature, and then those tactile sensory patterns that Frank was talking about with the, the modified sensory test. Um, the, the sensory testing right now is on hold. Um, but the other two pieces, we are actively recruiting because we can, um, do some of those completely remotely. So we can, we can mail out devices and, um, and do video visits to collect the information that we need without having to have any in-person contact. Uh, for this study, we are currently recruiting, um, females of all ages with diagnoses of RET syndrome. Um, we are looking for, for girls and women who have confirmed, um, that could be two mutations. Next slide, please. So there are three, um, components to the study right now. Um, this is, this slide sort of represents the the most time intensive on the part of, of parents when they choose to participate. Um, so this is getting background information about, um, the, the girls and women with RET syndrome and their, their skills, their ability, their development. Um, and we do that in two ways, using a video visit over Zoom. So might look similar to some telehealth visits you may have had with your, um, daughter's care providers, um, where we ask questions about your, your daughter's health and development. Ask you to sort of put your daughter in the frame so that we can watch her for a few minutes, see how she moves. And we're pretty flexible in terms of that. So we try to schedule that at, at times that are convenient. You know, everybody is busy. Um, so if you need us on an evening or a weekend, we can make that happen. Um, and then we also send out some online questionnaires to get some additional information. Uh, these can take about an hour to complete, but we send out a reusable link. So if you want to do five minutes here or there, you can take as long as you need to, to, to complete those. Next slide. So the, the meat of the study are really the, the sleep watch and the, the skin temperature sensors. And these we've really designed to be um, as, as easy to do as possible. So for the sleep watch, you can see the device in the corner there. Um, it's um, a fairly small device that is fairly non-intrusive. And it uses, um, technology similar to what you might have in a Fitbit or an Apple Watch that uses movement to detect sleep and wake. Um, but unlike a Fitbit or an Apple Watch, uh, these devices can be programmed or record for up to two weeks at a time. They don't need to be synced or charged during that time. So we send it out to families, uh, they put it on their daughter's wrist and she would wear it for 14 days. At the end of that, it gets sent back to us and there's really not much else that needs to be done in the meantime. The one thing we do ask families to do is to try and press that little event marker button on the watch, um, when they put their daughter to bed at night and when they wake her up in the morning. We know it's a lot to ask. If people miss a day, that's okay. Um, we also ask families to fill out a, just a sleep diary with sleep, sleep, wake times and any times that they know that their daughter is awake during the night, or if she has an app during the day, that's helpful information for us to have as well. So we do two of these recordings, um, one about a month and a half or so after the first one, just so we can make sure that the information we're getting looks similar over time. Next slide, please. And then the other part of the study are these little, um, temperature sensors that look kind of like hearing aid batteries, um, that we send out and ask uh, families to use some, um, high-well argenic medical tape to just tape them to the tops of the foot and around the, the abdomen. There, we send out instructions on how to do this. Um, and generally it seems to be pretty well tolerated there. They're small enough that they generally don't get in the way. These little devices record temperature about every three minutes for seven days. So we can get a really nice picture of how um, what temperature changes during the day and the night. Um, there's sort of a pattern that you expect to see of skin temperature while you're asleep versus while you're awake when things are working well. So we can get a lot of information um, about sort of how thermal regulation is working using these little devices. Um, both these thermal devices and the sleep watch are waterproof and pretty robust. They're, they're pretty hard to destroy. So, um, you know, we're, we're not too worried about you hurting them, but we, you can take them off during baths or swimming or whatever, if you need to or want to. At the end of the recording, we send out a prepaid envelope with, that has the address on it. Um, you drop all the devices in there and drop it off at a FedEx box. Um, whatever's closest to you. If you don't have a FedEx net box nearby, or you have a hard time getting to one, we can always arrange a pickup. So we do our best to make this as, as easy on families as possible. Next slide, please. So families who do participate in the study, um, do get some compensation for it. We, um, provide a $25 Clin card, which is kind of like a Visa prepaid card, um, for completing the, the video visit and questionnaires, and then another $25 um, for sending back the, the sleep watch, um, after each time. So, um, we know that it, it is a lot of time and effort and we, we know that people are busy and it's a lot to ask. So we want to make sure that you feel appreciated. Anyone who is interested in participating or wants more information can contact Abby. She's our research coordinator on the study at Gillette, and her email is there. Slide please. So just to give you a sense of what's going to be happening once we are at a place where we feel comfortable doing, um, in-person visits, again, there are some studies that we're excited to get up and running again at Gillette. Um, the first one is that, that quantitative sensory testing, um, for this larger study that we hope um, we can, we can get back into, um, once it's appropriate to do so. The other, um, side of things is that we, um, we received a grant from the Midwest Ret Syndrome Foundation back in last winter to, to buy an eye tracking system to do some eye tracking research, um, in RET, and we're really excited to do that. Um, we got the equipment about two weeks before the COVID shutdown. So, um, so hopefully we will be up and running with that soon. So I think the last slide is just, um, all of our contact information. If anybody wants to get ahold of, of any of us. Oh, no, that one went away. Okay. Then I think that is all from us, and then I think it's back to page.
Trying to take my, uh, there you go. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. Um, incredible presentations and Dr. Fima, Dr. Bysing, Dr. Simons, Dr. Byers. We are so grateful for the work that you are doing and have done. You are frontline workers, you, um, you know, those of us with children with RET syndrome, we know RET syndrome doesn't sleep, but we know that during this time, you have not been allowed to sleep either. And, uh, when we put out the idea of the town hall, you were the first ones to raise your hand and say, yes, we want to reconnect with our families. And we want to, uh, assure them that, that things are continuing and that the world did not stop when shelter in place happened and that your work is continued. And we are just really so incredibly grateful for your time tonight and, uh, for all of the work that you have done over the summer and are continuing to do for our families. So thank you very much. Um, if you don't mind, I want to turn our time, our attention now to a few things that we're doing nationally and internationally, just to give you a few updates. And, uh, they will pivot back to the local Midwest area as well. So if you haven't had a chance to catch up with, um, some things that retsyndrome.org has continued to do for you over the summer. I'm going to share some things right now, and, and then Matt's going to come back, come back online. So uh, you all are very familiar with our mission. We are completely committed to accelerating, uh, research towards a cure and, um, treatments while at the same time empowering families with information, knowledge and connectivity. And this town hall is an example of that connectivity and, and keeping all of us in the different spheres of RET syndrome connected on the advances in research as well as care practices, quality of life, school, um, and just being friends with each other. Uh, just knowing that we're not alone is, is a big, is a, uh, big solid foundation for us moving in through this journey with RET syndrome. Um, about our research mission. So we know RET syndrome is a complex disorder. For those that have been around for a while, you know that we are committed to our research agenda. It's not advancing as fast as any of us would like, but it is advancing incredibly fast uh, in, uh, compared to other disorders. And we've talked about the natural history study and how that's allowed us to advance to clinical trials. We're working on gene therapy. We're working on neuro-ableitative therapies. And, um, we just believe that we have to target every possible approach because we never, we don't know what is going to yield the best result, but any result is better than no result. So you can count on us to continue the full spectrum research. And all of that happens with the support of, of families. The majority of our research investment comes from the fundraising from families, although we do have some, uh, support that comes in through other avenues as well. But slide froze. Okay. One of the things that we announced this summer, if you didn't catch, we really want families to be at the center of the research agenda. We want you to know that as information's coming from the bench, if it's coming from the labs, it's going to reach your kids. And there's going to be a time where we're going to ask you to participate. And you just heard about some wonderful studies that, um, really need your involvement, um, and they can't advance without it. But it's always very overwhelming to determine, um, and this is an incredible statement to say what study of all the studies that are out there is the right one for me and my family. And so we've launched the RET Research Ready Program. Um, and this was in July of 2020, and it was to, to really get clinical trial readiness throughout pervasive throughout the RET community for families, clinicians, researchers, sponsors. So as you speak to your pediatrician, or as you speak to a case manager, and you want to talk to them about research studies that are available that you want to be involved with, we wanted to create one portal where you can go and you can get your questions answered, and you can easily bring people to where the research environment is. So this is, uh, just, it's a strategic extension of our agenda. I think the tool that is most, uh, kind of fun to play around with, but also is really helpful for you to, to find what research is, is that your child is eligible to participate in, or might be soon to age in at, into, um, is the MyRET Trial Finder. Now, if you join us in October for our RET Ed, we're going to give you a true orientation to the RET Research Ready Program and the MyRET Trial Finder. So I'm not going to take you into the website now and, and do that because you can join us again in a couple of weeks, but, um, I wanted to let you know that it's there and you can go play around with it. You can enter your information, you can sign up for alerts. And right now, every study that is reflected in the MyRET Trial Finder are studies that are in clinicaltrials.gov, which means that they are safe, they are approved, they have been through institutional review boards, and, um, they're completely vetted in the, the larger research community for your participation. We're working on adding additional studies. So for example, the studies that Brienne and Frank are involved with, if you would like to have your studies added to the MyRET Trial Finder, we will work with you um, to get all IRB studies, uh, into, into the Trial Finder. The second arm of our foundation is empowering families, and that's really because our foundation is made up of parents and friends of those diagnosed with RET syndrome. I have a teenage daughter with RET syndrome, and I don't know where would I would be today if retsyndrome.org wasn't there for me when, uh, Katie was diagnosed. And I am so glad to be able to pay it forward to every other family that I meet. And at this point, I can say that I have met hundreds of families from around the world, and we all have children who are on a spectrum, but we have so much in common. And if we don't focus on that commonality, um, life is hard. So we really pride ourselves on committing to bringing you information about um, medical issues, quality of life, school, raising awareness. We really have a nice program for new families. So if we have any new families with us tonight who have not connected with us at retsyndrome.org, I encourage you to go to our website and sign up. And we'll get you a lot of resources. What you're going to hear from Matt and Matt Nationaly Doms, as well as the Midwest Ret Syndrome Foundation really can connect you with information that is specifically relevant to families living in Minnesota or surrounding areas. But the, the bigger topics that are universal for all of us are, uh, help with I E Ps. How to get a, a referral to the right clinic to get medical care for your child in the areas that are unique to RET syndrome. I'm connecting you with the community through social media, Facebook, Twitter, um, Instagram, LinkedIn, wherever you are, whatever, whatever social media is coming tomorrow will be there to help you be connected. We're also here to give you information because RET syndrome is a complex disorder. And when you're new to it especially, it's hard to articulate what it is and what it means for your child and what it means for your family and what kind of supports you need to, to have a good quality of life and to help your child develop in the best way that she can or he can. And, um, we're here to provide that information to help you learn the vocabulary and raise awareness with others. And that can be through, um, angel awareness cards or personal pages. Lots of things we've designed to help you on your journey. Um, particularly this last summer, I wanted to remind everyone, um, that if, if you weren't online during shelter in place, we rapidly pivoted to the reality that our kids, ourselves as parents, we were at home without the support of school, without the support of therapies, without the support, many of us of the caregivers and, um, certified nursing assistants and, and RNs who are coming into our home, and we were kind of out there alone. What we did as a foundation was we brought some of the best, uh, people from around the world together, and we did a series of Facebook Lives to help families learn how to provide some continuity of care so that you didn't have to completely fear and worry that your child would regress further. Um, and if you were at home without the equipment that you were used to having, um, from school or the therapy clinics, that what could you use? What were the everyday items that you could use at home to do some things that would be really engaging for your child? And those, all those sessions were recorded. I'm going to show you, if I can flip over to our website real quick, that those resources are still there and you can access them and you can watch them. So ideas, while the weather is maybe still nice this fall for a little bit in the Midwest, um, ideas of how you can do aqua therapy in the pool and make it fun, but it's therapeutic. Communication strategies, um, moves and stretches at home using everyday equipment, sofas, use the wall, use your kitchen chair. Um, you know, without going and spending a ton of money on things. And these were, um, these are all recorded and we did focused Facebook Lives on, uh, young children, tweens and teens and adults who all may be at different points of the spectrum of their particular version of RET syndrome, but also are at different places in their lives in terms of their cognitive ability, their communication abilities, and, um, their size. Because we know that as our kids grow older, it also becomes harder for us as we get older to also do some of these moves and stretches with our kids. So Dr. Mary Lotan and others did just some really wonderful sessions on, um, getting everyone in the family involved with communication and with movement, two really key things with RET syndrome. So I just wanted to share that, um, not to take us back to that time in the spring and summer when things were so bleak, but to remind you that, that we, we brought some great resources to you, and those are still valid and helpful. Um, we also have been posting periodic community updates from our medical advisor, Dr. Tim Banky from Children's Hospital Colorado. And those recommendations were written, um, with the contributions and shared advice from all of the medical directors, from all of the RET syndrome centers across the country. And we'll continue to provide ongoing updates on our website at retsyndrome.org/covid19. In case you're, you know, we need to put out new messaging, you can go there and find it. And we've committed to RET Ed monthly webinars. You can find an entire library on sessions and some of our, uh, folks that we've heard from today recorded some of these webinars. They're on various research topics and various, um, symptomatic things that we've done a deep dive on, whether it is, uh, epilepsy or GI issues. Whether it is epilepsy or GI issues or nutrition. These have all been recorded and they're available on our website for you to review. I talked about in October, next couple of weeks, we have one coming up on clinical trials. And we're going to give that a broad look at all of the clinical trials that are happening right now in the US. In addition to the ones that are taking place there at Gillette Children's. And we're going to do a great orientation on the My Trial Finder. So I hope you join us in October for that one. And then we've got the future calendar listed. Okay, the other amazing thing, and I happen to have a copy of it right here with me. Oh no, what happened to my slides? Sorry, went off of slide view, but you can look at the actual book. You don't have to look at a slide. Communication Guidelines. So we know that in Rett syndrome, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Okay, um, so we know in Rett syndrome, our kids can communicate. We know that. We know a lot of people working with our children have a hard time seeing that right away. They have a hard time doing assessments with our kids. They have a hard time knowing exactly how to start doing interventions. They have a hard time understanding what are some of the complicating issues with the syndrome that our children have? That make communication in Rett syndrome unique compared to other developmental disorders. So your fundraising dollars went to an enormous study that was conducted over five or six years with over 600 people participating. And it resulted in this beautiful communication guidelines. It's now available for purchase. It's only $10, far less than it cost us to do this work or to publish it, but we wanted it available for you. And we hope you'll make yourselves available to the print copy or the electronic copy. Especially now with start of school, if you have a new teacher, a new speech language therapist, a new AAC or AT person. Who's working with your child, they would really benefit from getting their hands on the guidelines. Okay, I'm going to turn a little bit to plug for different ways that we can empower ourselves through fundraising. And Lisa Everett's going to share some things happening in the Midwest coming up. But nationally, we've had to take a lot of our on the ground, in-person fundraising events virtually. And they have been doing incredibly successful. The Rett Ride Across America has been happening for a couple of years now. And this year, we hope that you'll participate. On Saturday, October 3rd, it will be a virtual ride and you can participate. You can ride around your block, you can ride your Peloton, you can ride a stationary bike, you can ride as far as you'd like. Casey Byers, my, our good thoughts go out to the Byers family. They were affected by the hurricane just yesterday. Is going to do the Gulf Coast Endurance Ride on 10/3. We hope that things will be better and he'll, he'll be able to kick off. But we encourage you to get involved with that, a nice way to get moving and raise awareness. We also have a virtual gala on October 24th at 8:00 PM. And for 50 bucks, you can join us at the gala, you can hear some great stories. We're going to multimedia events and you can raise a glass against Rett. For $50, you can get one of these beautiful glasses and, and help us. Contribute to our advancement of research and empowering families. And being later in September, I wanted to mention October Rett Syndrome Awareness Month. That's really our month to come together and raise awareness for our rare disorder. If you visit our website, retsyndrome.org for families, resources, October. You can find all kinds of resources that will help you online through social media. We've got t-shirts and tattoos and all kinds of things that you can, and you can buy. We will be having this year a very special day where one day we're going to ask the world to light it up purple. So ours, our signature color. So please visit the website, take a look at our news flashes that are coming. And we'll be sharing 31 facts that you can pair with your own personal experience with that fact about Rett syndrome on social media. We find great attraction for those and they do a great job raising awareness. Okay, so that's it for, for my side of the retsyndrome.org. National campaigns and national programs and national efforts that have been underway all summer with all of you in mind. And what I'd like to do now is bring Matt back to talk about, as your state rep about some things that he has for advocacy. And information for you in Minnesota.
Yeah, so I was given a few topics and there was, there was two that stood out to me right now. And the first one was being school reopening, especially here in Minnesota. So we all know that the school districts are following the state's guidelines. And each district is different, whether you're attending distance learning, a hybrid setup or a total in-person. So personally, in the school district where we are, our daughter is going Monday, Tuesday. And then she's at home distance on Wednesday and then back in person on Tuesday and Thursday. So then we, I guess I'll, I'll say that these views are coming up here on my own, not those of anyone else. Not sure if I need to say that, but you know, just to get that out there. So we've, we've found the best to establish open communication with our teachers and administration. Like any, everyone else, we were leery, not sure if we should send her back. But over the summer, she defiantly told us numerous times that she does not want to be with us anymore. So far for Bennett, mask wearing is going well. We've, we have visited the school before the school year a few times. We saw the environment that she was going to be in and we felt comfortable with the way it is and the way it was set up. And the number of children that would be in that room and the, the aid count that would also be there, working with them. Aids are wearing masks and gloves. And then they also do have Plexiglas up around their workspaces. In our school district, they did eat lunch in the, in the lunchroom, but they're no longer doing that this, right now. So yeah, like I said there, we feel that our school is taking the necessary steps to ensure the safety. But one thing we were kind of disappointed in was the, our, our school now was a big proponent of inclusion. So they would have a buddy come in and read to kids or work on math problems and just get that engagement, that social interaction. They had to limit that now, but they're working on a way that they can do that in the future here. Next slide. So then I thought this was a big one, our resources, what's available to you? Many of you might have heard of Pacer Center, Champions for Children with Disabilities. Just actually got this today in the mail, but one of their newsletters. So if you go to their website, pacer.org, sign up, you'll get those periodically. A big thing that they can provide help in is IEPs. Everyone always has a question about that. How do I advocate for my child? Pacer Center is staffed by parents. They volunteer their time to help out with that. And the good one is Arc Minnesota or Minnesota Help. And then also Facebook. In the day of social media, there are many people out there willing to listen, willing to help out. So good, just general one, Rett Syndrome Family Support, search that and you'll pull up. Retsyndrome.org, Dad's Network. That's a good place for dads to just go and ask other dads how they're handling this. And then for everyone in Minnesota, Minnesota Special Needs Support Group, another good, just general, ask questions, get answers kind of thing. And then the state rep, Ashley and I are here. Our phone numbers or emails are available on retsyndrome.org. We're here just to work you any, any way you need. Next thing, social workers, teachers, therapists, and then Gillette. We found Gillette has a great therapeutic rec that can help get kids active in a normal way. Define parks with a dab of equipment, get that out there for you, help you take advantage of the parks and get outside, especially this past summer. And then providers, whether that be your, your PT, your speech, they've been instrumental in helping us get equipment. Especially a Toby AAC communication device, that's been great for getting Bennett to have a voice. That was all that I had for the slides. Paige, if you wanted to give me the screen, I can walk people through how to find your information on retsyndrome.org. And then also if there's anyone that is newly diagnosed, I'll show you how to make contact with Samantha Brand, who's the resource manager at retsyndrome.org. So homepage here. So here we have the homepage, if you, to look for, to get our information for myself and Ashley, click on Families. And then scroll down here to Resources. So then State Resources is right here. And then it'll pull up a map and you'll see Minnesota right here. And then this little icon here notes is that we have Gillette Children's, especially the healthcare. You go ahead and click on the state. The National Representative Samantha Brand, her information's right there. And then just down below is Ashley and myself. Feel free to give us a call, send us a text or send us an email. And then if you continue to scroll down, you'll see the different studies and contact information. And then also different other resources. And if you're newly diagnosed, you can just click on the left here under the newly diagnosed heading. And then fill out some information and then it'll go directly to Samantha and you'll probably hear from her very shortly. And that was it, Paige. Thanks.
All right, I think I'm taking over next. Thank you, Matt, and I want to thank Paige and retsyndrome.org. I very much appreciate being a part of this evening's presentation. So my name is Lisa Everett. I'm a mom and president, but most proud to be a mom. I'll come back to that in a minute. My first slide, so Paige, if you want to advance. My first slide is actually going to circle back to the school issue. And the reason for that is a few weeks ago, I interviewed a mom, Patty Nevis, who lives in Wisconsin. But she's also a teacher. And so she's got the dual role of dealing with COVID in her home and in her work setting. So I just wanted to quickly share some takeaways from her and I having a conversation. So she was very quick to tell me that there are no good answers, there are no good solutions. And the reason for that is because of the next point, which is be ready for change and more change and change and change. I think we're already seeing that as districts have gotten underway this fall with school. So be ready for change and ask questions regularly within your school setting. And that's administration, teachers, et cetera. The, some of this got touched on about mainstreaming, especially if your child was already at older. Well, not necessarily older grades, but if they had past opportunities of mainstreaming, interacting with age-related peers. What is that going to look like or is that even going to be offered right away, given the distancing? Another point, especially as we have some nice weather here going at the beginning of the year. But will there be outside time allowed and what would that look like or will there even be a change of rooms? In her case, she emphasized that the setting for her daughter would literally have been a corner of that special ed room. And really no opportunities for getting out and doing the mainstreaming, et cetera. So focusing on that whole picture of what your daughter's day may look like. And then asking, you know, masks are obvious, however, what are those expectations? What are the realities going to be with other special ed students? And really where does that fall within your comfort of your child being in a setting that maybe isn't always honored with masks? And then another kind of unique one, I thought, is doing your own risk assessment and probing on. You know, maybe your child has a one-on-one or at least whoever they see regularly in their day. And what is that person's approach to COVID and their habits, their beliefs? Because if they're feeling strongly and adhering to things that would align nicely with your comfort. But that might not always be the case and that can play into your decision of, of sending your child or not. With the distance learning option. And then the other bullet point is, I've seen some of this locally as well. Is for those that are doing the distance learning, whether all the time or one day a week. But if you have that choice, just for variety with your child, is rather than assuming you have to use your home as your distance learning site. Could it be a library, a YMCA, even your grandmother, grandparents' home? Maybe they live alone and that's a safe place to go, but it's a change of environment, maybe a little quieter than your home. But considering an alternative safe place than your home to distance learn. And then the last point she made was thinking of all those therapy options and really continually probing into. How will that work and whether it aligns again with your comfort of keeping your child safe? So one thing I do want to add unfortunately is Patty Nevis called me today. And she sent this on Facebook for those that might follow her. But a teacher within the district of her daughter, her daughter's in middle school. But this teacher in high school contracted COVID recently and just passed away. So this is unbelievable, challenging times. And I personally was just shocked that this has happened so fast. And then right in her world where her daughter attends school. So she did tell me today, please pass on the seriousness and realities of what's going on. So anyway, I do want to pass that on and I thank Patty for meeting with me and Paige. We can go on to the next slide. So as I said earlier, my name is Lisa Everett and I am the president of the Midwest Rett Syndrome Foundation. We are our own 501(c)(3), so we were founded back in 2002. We are all volunteer-driven. So while we are our own foundation, our own nonprofit status. We have supported what retsyndrome.org does from day one and I don't see that changing. So we are dedicated to our mission, which is we do our fundraising and we want to fund research. But we also want to support and educate families in the Midwest. And for us Midwest traditionally means Minnesota, of course, I live in southern Minnesota. And then we have North and South Dakota and Iowa and Wisconsin. So as I mentioned earlier, I am a parent. I have one child, daughter Jill. And she was diagnosed in 2000 at Gillette and she will be turning 23 next week. So our, our, my, I should say, my participation, being a board member from the time we were founded. And as we speak today, we have nine members, seven of which are parents, not a big surprise. And again, we're all volunteer-driven. So in 2007, that's when we launched the Rett Syndrome Clinic here with Gillette and that's in St. Paul, Minnesota. What I wanted to touch on with that is we had a question early before this event. As far as people asking, how do we support your mission, whether that's national or local? And what I want to say is the clinic that exists and all that you heard about this evening. That really started with just a simple vision. It, it really was myself, my husband Chuck. We had that vision of we wanted care for our daughter. But we wanted the ability to have those therapies, treatments, drugs, whatever it was going to be. I wanted that in my backyard and that was a very selfish thing. But I knew by saying that and wishing for that, it would help us all. And so I took that thought to our board members at the time. They never hesitated and embraced it. And so we rallied as a group and we approached the leadership team at Gillette and they embraced it without hesitation. And now we have a center of excellence and that was designated back in 2017. And then for those of you that follow the Facebook, it was announced today. I saw Dr. Fima, our own neurologist, is now on medical advisory board for retsyndrome.org. So we're very happy about that. And of course, along the way, as you've heard, we have that connection with the University of Minnesota. They've been engaged with all of this from day one. And you've heard about their specific research related to Rett and it's again being off. And you've heard about their specific research related to RET and it's again being offered local. So my point of all of that, again, is not to toot my own horn whatsoever, but it's that inspiration to the parents that are listening. I know the, from the registration list, we have lots of new families out there right now. We have lots of families across the country. That are new to all of this. And I don't want to have the newest families thinking this stuff always existed because it did not. And so I have found in all my years of being involved is the power of parents is amazing. And so when you have your vision and you have your ideas, take it forward. And so whether that's appropriate to do through someone like Paige or myself, whatever it is, please do that. So next slide, Paige. So with all of that, as you've been hearing tonight, our foundation of parents. We certainly have a very strong partnership with Gillette and the U of M. When we launched the clinic, we also launched an annual Red Syndrome Education Day. I think, I mean, well, that started technically in 2005 before the clinic actually was official. But we've been doing education day primarily it's held here in Minnesota in the spring. We've been bringing in national speakers from redsyndrome.org and then of course, our key staff with Gillette and the university. It is just been a wonderful time to network. The families have so appreciated that time of meeting each other. And having that face-to-face time with providers and researchers and getting questions answered. Now with COVID, of course, it was a tough decision, but we canceled our face-to-face event for this last spring. I'm really crossing my fingers. We're going to start talking about that soon as a board. And with Gillette and you, the university, whether we can have next spring or early summer, I'm going to push hard for that in some safe fashion. So stay tuned. You can be following all of that on our Facebook and website page. And then of course, tonight, you've heard about the research opportunities, things that are available local. And I will certainly say thanks again to Paige and redsyndrome.org for the research-ready feature that is so, so very nice. Our fundraising, we have done a ton of fundraising back to the very beginning. Back in those early days, we did golf and dinner fundraising events and we did that for about 12 years. Chili Fest was something that we incorporated for about seven, eight years. And now we've evolved and we've been doing a fall food festival for three years, going on four, but I'll, I'll come back to that. And then another newer event is a hockey event that is also going to go into its fourth year, we hope. And I'll come back to that on the next slide. But in a, in a recent update and all of the fundraising that we've been able to do and just truly tremendous support locally. This past year, we were able to provide $40,000 to the University of Minnesota for that eye tracking study. And then an additional 50,000 went to redsyndrome.org so that they could continue their research efforts. So we have done far better than average the last couple of years with our fundraising. So we're definitely on an uptick and we don't want COVID to slow us down if at all possible. But thank you to those that have been supporting us throughout all of those years. So moving forward, I think I'm on my last slide. Go ahead, Paige. One thing I want to touch on, it's not on the slide, is in terms of upcoming events, things happening locally. Through redsyndrome.org, we have our local run, walk, roll is coming up very, very fast. So I'm going to throw it out there and hope that you jump on the website when I'm done, if you want to participate. But they're going virtual, not a big surprise, but Mary Calstrum, who lives here in Minnesota, has done a fabulous job all these years. And she's continuing that virtually. So October 4th is that event and you can find a link on our website for that. Otherwise, our other events falling more so under our foundation is. As Paige mentioned, the Raise a Glass Against RET is happening October 24th. We here in the Midwest struggled with trying to do something blended in-person, virtual and keep our food festival going this fall. We decided that's just not going to happen. So we are very happy to basically join arms with redsyndrome.org. We are co-branded with them. And we're going to do everything we can to send all of our support and funding that direction. So we very much support you registering for that, whether you're Midwest or beyond. And then final is the Moose Winter Hockey Event. Just talked to that event organizer last week. Really, it's all crossing our fingers. They want to get their normal hockey season underway that they do in the adult league. And then see how it goes and structure all of that safety stuff around it. And thankfully, we have three years under our belt. We kind of know how our event runs. And they're going to try to blend all of that together and still have it fly. Traditionally, that's been Super Bowl weekend. So watch for updates for an early February. And that's been held in St. Louis Park in Minnesota. So pretty much anything I talked about on events and you can stay tuned is through our website. So www.midwestret.org. So I think that's all I have. And again, thank you very much for having me tonight, Paige, and I'll turn it back to you.
There you go. Thanks. Thank you, Lisa. I am just over the moon, the partnership and the collaboration between all of our four organizations and all of the families. I look at the names of the families that are attending tonight and, and all of the contributions that you have made to the success. And I hope that being here tonight at this town hall has given you the sense that it has been worth it. That every effort that you have made to raise awareness through social media, to share your children with clinicians and with researchers. And with each other is yielding results and will continue to yield results. And so thank you for letting us all have an opportunity to give the updates and reconnect you and get you adjusted to our new normal. And, and, and a glimpse of some really positive, hopeful things coming in the future. Now, we did ask you at the time of registration to submit your questions. And I think we got some really, really good questions submitted. So I'm going to pause our slides right now. And I'm going to invite all of our speakers to please turn your webcams back on. And we're going to go through some of the questions that were pre-submitted at the time of registration as well as. Take a look at any questions that are being submitted to the queue. So if you have, thank you. Hello, everyone. I see you. I'm not going to turn on my webcam because it, it drags down memory on, on the app here. But for, for anyone in the attendee area, again, if you want to type a question for any of our speakers, go ahead and put it in the queue. And we'll get to them, but why don't we turn it over? I think Dr. Bising and Dr. Fima have a list of some questions that are about some clinical care concerns you all are having. And then Dr. Simons and Byers, perhaps you'll take some research ones. If you don't have them in front of you, I can read them. And you might want to take your microphones off of mute if you are still on mute.
I'm, I'm also happy to answer any hockey questions. I mean, I'm, I'm a little hurt that Lisa didn't mention the Ice Cats in our performance at the tournament, but that's okay.
And it's, yeah. All season, football's happening, right? And baseball and basketball.
So Paige, I'm looking at the questions that you sent out earlier on my other screen here. The first question is. Is there planning to continue the natural history study? Can we just simply say yes for that? I think we talked earlier about how important the natural history study is. How it's led to a lot of drug trials that we wouldn't have otherwise. And I think it's headed for a new era with the biological sample collecting. It's going to be leading to tremendous new knowledge. So we want to keep that going as long as possible. The second question was how soon will treatments be available and for what ages? I think I'm going to let Dr. Fima answer that. He's on the board now.
There's so much innovation going on right now. It's kind of hard to answer that. We have studies available that have very discrete age ranges. I think the goal, a lot of enthusiasm around some of the gene therapy. Certainly Vaxxus is really driving some innovation experiments there. And the hope would be to get diagnosis early and treat early. I mean, I think my hope is that if we are able to get to a place where we have gene therapy, then hopefully we can do some screening at birth around then. Getting, we've seen this with other rare and orphan diseases where there becomes a gene therapy available. And so we are able to kind of lobby states to get newborn screening going. So we can diagnose kids early so we can give them the genetic therapy. Now, kind of the goal, right? So if there's a genetic defect, try to fix the genetic defect. There's a lot of obstacles and extra kind of steps that come with that. And certainly gene therapy is always a lot of, from what the dream is to what the reality is and all the steps that go along the way. It's hard to put a timeframe on that, you know? For those who have newly diagnosed children, you want the therapy yesterday. And for some of my older patients. It's always challenging for me to know what's going to happen if we suddenly do have a gene product too. I mean, I would want everybody to get it. What does it mean if we give a girl with an MECP2G mutation who's 20? Gene therapy, they've lived, you know, 20 years with altered biology and we just don't know. So I could probably dig really deeply on this, but I'll just kind of put it there. And I'll say, my hope is that we can treat people as early as possible. It also goes along with diagnosing as early as possible. We're getting genetics exploding. I mean, we've only known about the MECP2 genes since 1999. And some of the related disorders, CDKL5, FOXG1 and others are newer still. So I'll be quiet there and just say, I hope we treat everybody as soon as we diagnose them as early as possible.
I'm involved with our local IRB Institutional Review Board at the University of Minnesota. Where we're reviewing a lot of gene therapy for various diseases. There's a lot of metabolic diseases where they're starting to use gene therapy. And we recently had a halt two weeks ago on a study because there was a sudden death in Europe. We're trying to figure out what that means. We also know there's a challenge with adeno-associated virus, which is the vector most people are using. Having it get evenly to the brain. So there is tremendous progress compared to a few years ago. But there's, there's some ways to go before we can do this on a daily basis. And Gillette, we're thinking about, as Dr. Fima said, what does that mean to the kids? The girls, women, boys who get gene therapy? And how can we help them advance as fast as possible afterwards? So we're really starting to think about the habilitative care, but it's, it's future definitely.
I think the next question, there was a question about X inactivation percentages and how they can change over time. MECP2 gene is on the X chromosome. So yes, we have two copies. And so you, yourselves, you have to choose one X chromosome to work with or another one. And so the reason why oftentimes mutations are lethal in males is because it just, it's, it's a bad mutation. And females, it's somewhat protective because they do have the X chromosome that does have a good copy of the MECP2 gene. And early in development, the cells kind of divide and there's some different populations and some of them might be mosaic of, you know, 50%. Cells that are using the X chromosome with the abnormal MECP2 gene and 50% that have the abnormal. It can be different. And so somebody asked an X inactivation percentages change over time? And the answer is yes. It's not very well studied yet. The tissue we would care about most is probably brain tissue. And not to get creepy, it's hard to sample. So we tend to test more X inactivation and white blood cells and blood. But it can be very tissue-specific as far as the skin or the muscle. Or, you know, it's just about the brain itself. So it can change over time. We're kind of in our infancy in understanding that and how it impacts disease fully.
And there's some interesting early work, mouse work, looking at just how do we trigger and change X inactivation? I think that could be very exciting in the future, but it's still very preliminary. One of the other questions here is where is the closest clinic to Montana? I would say that's either Colorado or here, us here in Minneapolis, probably Colorado a little more. And Dr. Fima, there was a question here. Talking about epilepsy and non-epileptic episodes. I, I'm interpreting this to say that somebody is trying to explain ret spells versus epileptic events. And I'm grateful every day in clinic when you're there to talk about ret spells for me. So why don't you talk a little more about that?
Absolutely love Brett's, the treasure of working with red syndrome is, is the devotion of the families and how much passion we have around that. The challenge for neurologists working with red syndrome is that it's everything neurologic, it's sleep issues, it's epilepsy, it's autonomic dysfunction. It's behavioral dysregulation and it changes. So in answer to your question, with redsyndrome.org, we have developed a work group to look at that. Eric Marsh from Children's Hospital of Philadelphia is leading that. Remembering that up because we all struggle with this as providers, every neurologist, you know, some neurologists who work with red who say, I hate the term ret spells. And I personally am for that. I don't think there's a better way to describe it sometimes. And it's really challenging because depending on where you're at, some medical teams will call everything epilepsy. Some will call nothing epilepsy. Some will really get people confused about what the heck am I looking at? And the reality is, we oftentimes just need to really get a good prolonged EEG, just capture spells and try to figure out what is seizure, what is not seizure. Because a lot of these kids and adults do these prolonged spells that are agitated, they're breathing heavily. It looks like a seizure, but it's not always a seizure. And believe me, this is where Dr. Bising and I have put our heads together many times. Because we oftentimes wonder is this a pain expression behavior? And so we are looking for kidney stones and gallstones and urinary tract infections and retinal detachments and constipation and you name it. But there are the kids we've put through the whole mill and we still can't find a good example as to why they have ret spells. Personally, this is why I like the research of Dr. Simons and Dr. Byers and his whole team. You know, I think some of this is autonomic mediated, autonomic dysfunction is part of the diagnosis. I believe, and I've said this to many of the families I treat, I think this is like panic attacks sometimes. You know, the adrenal glands, which release adrenaline are tied with the autonomic nervous system. I believe some of these girls just have what physiologically is the basis of a panic attack. Or they have like this fight or flight response and they're just amped and agitated and ramped up for a while. And so, you know, many of those girls, if we ruled out physiologic things like a broken bone or urinary tract infection. I will sometimes try to target some of the autonomic stabilizing agents. But once it doesn't fit all, and I'd like to tell you that I've helped every girl perfectly, but I haven't. So there's some girls that we tried a lot of stuff and we've only seen side effects and no benefit. So the whole ret spells overall, if you have a team, it's not really digging into the complexity that is what seizure, what's ret spell? What, what am I looking at? I hope whoever asks that question is having an honest, open discussion with their team and they have a team that will listen. It's kind of a long-winded, non, kind of wandering answer. I'm sorry, but I, Art, I mean, you, you kind of know what this is like.
Yeah, I remember I answered the question about where the closest clinic to Montana was. You took a little longer, but yeah, this, this is one of the, the challenges. And one of the things that is really satisfying for our clinic is we work together to try to not just take care of seizures. But really try to take care of the whole patient and red syndrome in our clinic. And we, we work hard to have patients on the least number of medications possible, trying one thing at a time as best we can. Because we say the words, I don't know, quite frequently in our clinic. Because there's a lot we don't know, but we're continually learning and just continuing to try different, different therapies and different techniques for our patients. And I would say we're, we're successful. A lot of the time, the times we're not successful are in the front of our mind all the time.
It's, you know, I always grit my teeth a little bit and people call me an expert because the real experts are Matt Doms and Lisa Everett, because they're the experts in their kids. And so, you know, we're all just trying to habilitate, not always rehabilitate, but habilitate. So, you know, try to make the best life possible for every child that we see and it's so customized. So, yeah, we listen, we start listening and then we follow what we hear.
And we couldn't work with a better group of parents. We were anxious to go to clinic every time. I think we're out of questions.
Okay, I saw a few that I could answer from a parent perspective. Art, you took my easy one. Denver or Minneapolis-St. Paul. But then I saw another one here. Is an eye gaze communication device worth pursuing? Or is there a better approach with the red kids? I say you should. Give your child a voice. We personally, we have a Toby Dyna box. Bennett loves it and you got to think of it as a, they're learning a new language. So you need to have patience and give them time and practice. And most school districts now have AAC specialists. And they've shown us some new things we hear recently that we're, we're glad that we have them. And then there was another one here. Why is it so difficult to get dental work done for a person with special needs? Not sure if this person is older or younger. Bennett is 10. When we have been researching dentists, we have been looking at pediatric dentists. And then we've also asked if they have, not sure the proper way to say this, but if they have rights to do procedures at local hospitals. So the one that we use, she has rights to go to children's. So while we try to use that sparingly, it is much easier to get a good x-ray and to get a good cleaning and get a cavity filled at the same time. So if someone does want to talk to me about that or about the eye gaze device, like I showed you where you can find our contact information, feel free to reach out to me.
Matt, maybe I could piggyback on that also. We're in the state of Minnesota, we have a rare disease council, not just for red syndrome, but for all children with rare diseases. And dental access is one of the big issues we're trying to work on. It's a funding issue, of course. Nobody is interested in funding kids who take more time and more sedation for their dental care. But I think that's, it's an issue we're going to have to get more active about in the rare disease community because it's a problem all the way.
Thank you. This is Paige. I've got another question in the queue that is about caring for children as they become adults. So what are your recommendations? And this is particularly suited because you all have a wonderful solution for kids at the age past age 18. Can you talk about general medical care?
So in, in our clinic, we have elected to continue seeing patients with red of all ages. We're trying to focus on symptoms related to red syndrome rather than all of their care as they age. But we find it's a real challenge. A lot of adult doctors don't have a lot of experience with red syndrome. They don't have a lot of experience with kids with rare disease and neurologic compromise. So we're, we're committed to continuing to see adults with red syndrome. But at the same time, we're interested in getting some of our colleagues trained in medicine pediatrics interested so that we can really develop a cohort of adult doctors that are experienced with red syndrome and comfortable managing girls, women, and parents with this disease.
And I would, I would say from a parent perspective, take care of yourself. As Lisa knows, kids grow, or as we all know, kids grow. They don't get smaller. I guess, think ahead in your housing. Make those decisions earlier than you need to, to save yourself. And try and, try and find someone to help too. Which not, not the thing to do at this time, but hopefully times change. And Lisa, maybe you have some advice on that too.
Well, my two thoughts with what I just was listening to some of the feedback. So one of the wonderful things with Gillette is they have something called the Lifetime Clinic at the Phelan Boulevard location in St. Paul. So when Jill aged around 18, 19, we did an actual formal admittance process into the lifetime. But as Dr. Bising said, the red clinic in particular is continuing to see red syndrome patients at all ages. So I've been extremely thankful for that. And to be honest, I've expected that as she aged because I'm not going to go away. So that's been really good. And actually Jill, at 22, going to be 23 next week, we were scheduled for adult dental sedated procedure for cleaning and x-rays in March. It definitely got canceled because of COVID. And then we are actually going to see Dr. Bising and hopefully Fima tomorrow in red clinic tomorrow afternoon. And so I'm going to ask some questions that's going to hopefully lead to me rescheduling that dental appointment after that in October, hopefully. But last word back in spring is there's a dentist designated for adult patients with, in all of Gillette, not just red syndrome. And then my two cents, back to Matt and talking about communication and having the MyToby and things like that. What I have learned is there isn't one fix. And so what I want to do is put a little plug in for that latest communication book that Paige referenced. I have a copy, look through that copy. And the one absolute thing that I love at our stage in life and all that we've learned and all that we've tried with Jill and her school years are behind her. What I loved about it is its approach to, there isn't one solution. And so it helps you look at different ways for different settings, for different good days and bad days within your daughter. But it really helps hit home that there isn't a magical solution in communication. So I'm loving that and I encourage parents of all ages, especially early on, to really embrace that, that it's a, it's a low tech, a high tech, and keep track of that tech. Because when Jill started in school, there wasn't such a thing as an iPad, an app. And all of that is constantly changing. So it's actually a never-ending process with communication in our kids because of that technology. So that's my two cents on that.
Great, thank you. And this is Paige. If I can, if I can pile on with some more parent advice as the biggest challenges that face parents as their kids age to 18 and beyond is to really don't bypass or get behind on that guardianship and conservatorship process, setting up special wills, needs, and trusts, working with a good lawyer, a good advocacy organization. Matt referenced some that are available to you free of charge to help you navigate that. Because there are things that will not be in your control to be decision makers on if you, if you don't attend to those legal issues and you just don't want to find yourself in that situation. So don't be afraid of it. It's some paperwork, but it's not, it's not the worst process. Take care of it and, and think long-term. We did a Red Ed webcast around adulthood and living options a number of months ago. And a number of parents presented their very real stories of just reaching a time in their life where they could no longer meet the needs of their child. And they loved her so much that they needed to find a place where she could be well cared for. And they stayed very much involved in her life. And that's something that we don't often talk about. And so we presented the webcast from families who have had adult day programs that were wonderful and some that weren't so wonderful. Families who were able to keep their child in their home until she was in her 50s and to 60s and the parents were in their 70s and 80s. And that's a beautiful thing and that's a wonderful outcome from all of this great medical care that we are able to give to our kids now as they are aging. But we also presented some stories from parents who had to find placement options and that was done successfully. And we don't want any of those things to be taboo. Because I, you know, the best path forward in life is to be armed with information. So that's my advice is don't be closed-minded, don't be too afraid, ask questions and network with your other families and see what people are doing. Let's learn from each other. Okay, I think we've got two more questions. I know we're a little bit past the time, but I see everybody is staying on and we appreciate that. I know it's getting a little bit late. One of these is going to be easy. One of them is not going to be so easy, but Frank gets right in the area of pain and pain management. And Dr. Bising and Fima, you might have some answers too. So let's take the easy one first, which is a question from a parent asking if there are studies and clinics that help both typical and atypical children with red syndrome? Do you distinguish between those two populations?
The answer is yes. I think our clinic helps every patient with typical or atypical red. And actually, you know, red is based on diagnostic criteria that were updated last in 2010. There's reiteration coming out eventually here again too. Because the last iteration was not really based upon any genetic data. That's a, we're sort of fumbling a bit with that over time as research, more research opportunities come down the pipe and they're being very specific about inclusion, genetic inclusion criteria. But yeah, no, as far as studies, typical or atypical red, I think Frank, I could let you speak to that. I think there's research that you guys do, typical and atypical red, with a lot of research studies that are out there now. It gets really kind of sciencey, like we really have to drill down on kind of what exactly the criteria are, what their, some of the rating scales are. A lot of really, it's more detail that I can answer quickly. But atypical red kids could still get into many of the research studies, but it all depends on how they screen with the specific criteria for each study.
Yeah, I, and Brianne, you can supplement this. I mean, just my quick response is for our group in general, we're interested in everyone under the family of MECP2 mutations or disorders and related, what Tim had mentioned earlier, FOXG1. It said MECP2 duplication, atypical, typical. We, you know, I like to think there's, there's a patient for every protocol, protocol for a patient in terms of some, what our interests are. There's obviously for any one study, specific details, but in general, there's, we're open for business for, for, for all.
Great, thanks. And I'd also like to comment that I really encourage parents who have had somebody tell you that your child is atypical red syndrome, if that was maybe a while ago or maybe was a designation given by someone who is not a red expert, that you might want to spend some time with Dr. Fima and Dr. Bising and really see if that definition fits your child. Because we understand that red syndrome is a spectrum disorder. And so we want to be really careful with those, those words typical and atypical these days.
I, I think that's really true. When, when we see kids in clinic, we're, we're not really concerned with the term, you know, typical, atypical. As you said, it's a spectrum. We take a look at everybody and we, we celebrate how functional they are. And then we try to work on the other issues. And it really, that phrase doesn't matter from a clinical standpoint to our clinic.
Thank you. So one of the final questions, I think, of the evening. And if, if people have more questions, get them into the queue. We'll take them offline. We'll do a QA document. I know we'll get them out through the Midwest social media pages and our pages. But we had a parent who's really, really struggling with their child. I'm just going to read this question directly regarding the autonomic nervous system and regulating autonomic nervous system response. And her child just escalates into hours and hours and hours of distress. And only through the use of getting into like oxycodone is she able to get back into a state which is not pain. And because you are the pain specialists in the country right now, I, and you just did a webcast for us last month and I would refer this parent to please go back and watch that webcast. I'd like to also share that we are going to do a webcast in early 2021 about medication guidelines for pain management. But for the purposes of this parent who's struggling right now, what, what, it's not quick advice, but in the interest of time, what would you all have to share with this parent that could help her out?
I could speak clinically to start with. What, what we like to do to approach a patient like that is first, take a look at, are there underlying issues that we can take care of? Is there a patient with significant constipation, significant urinary retention? Do they have gastritis secondary to that? Are there respiratory issues? All triggering the autonomic nervous system. Oftentimes, we can, we can take care of those issues and the, the manifestation of those things with pain or anxiety really decrease quite a bit. Sometimes we, we don't find a source of pain. Many times we do. But then a lot of times, there's also some, some signs of distress that remain. And then we try to treat those clinically, one, one thing at a time. We don't jump to narcotics right away. That's one of the last things we would do. But we sometimes need to get there. Jim, do you have?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of all talks I've had with Dr. Glaze, Dr. Percy, Dr. Newell, Dr. Motil, Dr. Banky. Just that we talk, we have all of these patients and, you know, Dr. Motil from Baylor will always tell you, you know, they start with trying to dig in to make it through the GI system moving right. And I constipated because we find a lot of GI pain drives a lot. But it's really hard because you're going to have to drill down. This is going to get really specific really quickly because, you know, I want to know what's happening when your child's in distress. What starts before they do it? Has it been captured on EEG? The age of the child's important because certainly autonomic dysfunction really ramps up and goes crazy. Certainly during puberty with the teen years and it tends to calm down naturally. I also want to know what meds the kid is on because a lot of the meds can exacerbate lots. So it's not uncommon for some of our really complicated red girls to be on a mixture or cocktail of meds. And sometimes part of the problem too is the meds they're on. You know, there's lots we use to help with sleep and help with bowels and help with seizures that can really drive everything crazy too. And I've seen the complexity of the red population for me, eternally keeps me on my toes. And in fact, there's even one patient right now today, I've been taking calls on all week. And I still, I've been through lots of trials with her. I've admitted her twice. I put her in the hospital and just played with meds and I still can't quite get her in the corner. And I'm not really sure where to go with that. And I talked with her, with, talked with, you know, Tim Banky and many others about that too. Even, you know, Percy gave me a call about this kid. So sometimes it's really hard. Sometimes like, we don't like oxy, but sometimes we don't have a better option.
Paige, if I could jump in as the parent answer, that's not really always an answer. But I don't know if that particular question indicated the age of the child. But the youngest, you know, those early years of regression, we hear more often than not that it's the regression and loss of skill that that child once had is so frustrating. And that's bringing about the outburst and crying and things. So if it's a really, really young child going through regression, but as you go into older years, then yeah, yeah, open up the book of 100,000 things that it could be. I have found immense satisfaction in the journaling and recording that I do of key things with Jill every single day. And one of those things that even though with the journaling, it still took seven weeks to try to figure out that it was her gallbladder and her gallbladder was horrible and full of stones and removed at age 19. But even with my journaling and my doctoring with Dr. Bising multiple times, it took a long time because that particular rounds of pain coming and going. And so there sits the mystery of the good days throwing us off. So journal, I'm a gallbladder preacher. Do not rule that out at any age. I'm a gallbladder preacher. Do not rule that out at any age. So that's my two cents on that question.
Thanks, Lisa. So that's a, that's a really good one. Yeah. So and our younger children definitely during regression, it's a lot of, of behavior feels like pain, you feel frustrated, you feel out of loss, your heart is broken trying to, to solve it. But it will get better if, if this is a child, young, young, young child. You're speaking to parents with experience here that those days will pass. The days are long, but childhood does pass swiftly and she will come out of her regression period. And most of our girls do tend to really settle down and it's not a medical issue. It's developmental, behavioral. And, and it's a period of sadness and frustration for everybody. As our girls turn to teenagers and women, I think they do become more predictable and we know them better and we can trust our gut when we know that her behavior is not typical, it's not normal, don't give up on her. And you know, you definitely want to alleviate pain if that's what she's feeling, but don't just think that that's solving the problem. So thank you. Thanks, Lisa, for chiming in there. I appreciate it. And of course, we want to make ourselves available to using the pain scales that have been so wonderfully developed to help us parents be data analysts and trend detectors and be able to bring that information to physicians. Because these, these guys, as you can tell, these, the women and men who have these amazing credentials that I wish I could turn back the clock and go to school and be as smart as you all. You know, you, you need our help when we come into your exam room or we come into your lab. We need to come prepared and, and help you understand our children because they can't speak for themselves always. And that's our job as parents. And so I hope that every parent attending our town hall tonight knows that you can call on us at the Midwest Red Syndrome Foundation and at redsyndrome.org to help you get connected to these experts, to help you get connected to other parents who have a child just like yours. So that you will have somebody that you can talk through parent issues with and, you know, come up with ideas. Please join us for our future red ads. We're going to continue to bring you all kinds of information and all of our red ads are specifically because you all have asked questions about something. So we've gone and we've asked the experts to come and present. And we'll remain committed to that through 2020, 2021. And I know someday soon we will all be back together again at a beautiful conference room in person. And I can't wait for that day. I hope until then that this has helped you feel reconnected, reassured. And my, my, my good night message is take time to replenish yourself. My, my, my advice to you is the days can be long, but find time to take care of yourself, time, time, take time to get breaks. Eat well, go to bed early. Our kids don't sleep well, so sleep when you can. And know that you've got some amazing people here fighting on your behalf. We hope to see you in October Awareness Month, doing all you can to raise awareness for our kids because they are worth our every effort. And nobody cares more than we do. So that's my closing thoughts. Would anyone else like to, to say anything before we sign off for the night?
No, thank you, Paige. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Be well, wash your hands, wear masks. We'll see you soon.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Good night.